All right, let me go ahead. Let me do this. Let me go ahead and call out to order our regular Board of Directors meeting for the Kusby Public Schools. I'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let me go ahead and just do a brief roll call since we're sort of here and then I think some are there. So, Arnie?
I am here.
I'm here as well. Kim is on vacation, so she will not be with us today. Kevin's here. Adrian?
Here.
Diane Johnson?
Here.
Thank you, Diane. And Dustin?
Here.
All righty. Let's see, we'll start off with the, we have tonight's agenda in front of us. Entertained a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move to your agenda. I will second it.
Thank you, Arnie. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. So, the next agenda item is to approve tonight's consent agenda. We have the new hires resignation and retirement request. We have quite an extensive list of new hires if you look, including some young, fresh faces and some not so young fresh faces. And then we have the meeting minutes for the May 9th, February 15th, and March 14th, Board meetings minutes.
I will move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Arnie. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dustin. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have consent agenda approved. All right, the next item is the retiree recognition. It's always a fun part of our end of the year board.
I always see one in the audience right now, so I will, I will talk about each one though first. We have Steve Allen, who was custodian for many years, worked in Harding Building for quite a few of those and was up here at the district office. He retired about mid-year this year and had 17 years in the district, so he, he will receive a planner box with his year that he began here in Kusby School District, 2005. Carol Suwa, Carol had 17 years in the school district as well, in a variety of roles, most recently specialized education, I believe, at Eastside? Melcombe?
No.
Melcombe. Fred Hunt, I doubt would, was coming. Fred would be here, but said 24 years of Kusby School District, both as a teacher and as a classified employee, working in our tech department. Rose Swinney, 25 years in our school district. That's a, that's a pretty awesome accomplishment when you get up here to 25 years. Lori Croft, who I talked to at graduation and she told me she was coming and she didn't. But Lori, 25 years in the district, retired earlier this year. Stacy Goldseth, 26 years in the district, primarily at Marshfield High School. And last but not least, and she is in the audience, and I'm going to actually present her with her certificate and her planner box for 32 years. No, 33?
And a half.
And a half. Sorry.
I started in January.
Okay. Well, we may have to picture shit. Is that correct? 1989?
Yes.
Okay. Who did the math on that? Cut that part right. It's 1989.
Yes.
That's impressive. Thank you very much.
In the same district.
Thank you very much for all of your, the Kusby School District. I hope you enjoy this. I hope you put some nice flowers in it. Becky's shaking her head that you have. They'll have some.
Thank you.
You got any wise words?
Wise words, wisdom. No wise words, some wisdom. Just, you know, we're here to service kids and, and it's been a good, long, been in three buildings. Yeah, so.
It's been a good career.
It has.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, I didn't intend to stay here longer than five years. And I'm still here.
There you go. Seems that in that way. I think that was my plan.
It does. Yeah, my, yeah, my plan was five years and then I was moving to the valley. I didn't want to be in Eastern Oregon and I didn't want to be on the coast. And here I still am.
There you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you to all our, our dedicated employees, the retirees, the salt of the earth for the district. And just as one other reminder and a thank you for another retirement, and that's Brian Trendall, so who's retiring as well. Appreciate all the, the board, all the work that you've done over the many years of the district and all the different roles that you've filled and wish you all the best in your next journeys, which hopefully will include the district a little bit.
Sure. I'm sure. Eli's already got me on his list.
It's good. I know in my work, we, we try not to let anybody retire fully. If we can squeeze an ounce of work out of them, we, we try to do so.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I had a recording. I couldn't find it. I looked for it. We were in the state championship basketball game when Brian was a student, and I was a teacher here. And it was one of the greatest moments in Marshville High School history when he took an outside jumper shot and it hit the rim and bounced straight up. And the announcer was just going crazy as it goes right back through him within the game. It was one of the great moments in athletics at Marshville High School.
Long, long time ago.
It was yesterday. But it was, it was.
Forty-one years ago.
Yeah, really remarkable, really remarkable. And there are moments like that when you're in school as a teacher or a student that kind of live throughout your history because you remember them at different times. Other big events will happen and it'll switch back to that. So, I want to thank Brian for a lot of memories, both of the student and his parents, who were great educators in our district. It's really been, and it's nice that he leaves a legacy, but Simon's working in the district now, so I just have to say a few words because it's been pretty remarkable to watch.
Thank you, Arnie. Like Linda, I was on a two-year window. I convinced my wife to move back and she said, we get, I'll give it two years. And it's been only six years, so it's been great. It's been a pleasure and an honor, particularly the last six years. You couldn't have convinced me that I'd be sitting in this chair for the last six years of my career. No way. Particularly when I was teaching. I never know the dark side. On the whole, I did. You end up in the ultimate dark side, in the chair. It's been great. It's great people. Now, we, we lost a few along the way, but great memories, great memories and great people. So, what's great about our district? We have a lot of great people.
Thank you, Brian. All right, let's go ahead and move to the building and staff presentations, and let's start tonight with OSEA business. And I see Valerie in the audience, so I assume she's giving us something today.
Tonight I'm going to share, I would like to say to all of you, thank you very much for our, our contract negotiations. We are done. Woo-hoo. And it did go well. Next year, Ms. Barbara Green is going to be the OSEA president, along with some new staff members that I'm going to let her introduce, her new cabinet. But on a personal note, as a community member and somebody that does work for the district, I have a concern. And I understand the financial piece that all of you guys are under. I understand the, the building situation. Next year, they want to, which I'm sure you are all aware, they would like to combine Blue Destination Kids, Don Blossom Vult, with the littles. And I do believe they're little, little kids, three, three to five.
Preschool kids.
My concern is that these, these pre-bloomed flowers aren't going to be okay for that age group. I have a concern about that. We experience behaviors and conversations that are not appropriate for, for people, new people. It's not appropriate for anybody, but here the kids are removed. They're kind of in their own space. Adults can handle that situation a little bit differently. And we really need to protect the younger ones. We want to show them something different than what these guys didn't get. So, I appreciate you hearing me on that. I just think that it needed to be said. So, I'm going to the bar. Barbara, my name is Barbara. Please do not call her Barbara.
I would second Val's concern on that, having littles, or like myself, and having worked at Destinations, I would be concerned about having the co-mingling of some of the language and some of the things that they talk about. That would be an awkward conversation to have with a four-year-old on some of the things that are said and around. So, I would second Val's concern on that. But on the OSEA part, so I have Braylandrum. She's going to be the vice president for us this year. Oh, I have. She did not prep the proper way as president. Prep anybody. Oh, I, do I have to talk into this to be heard on that? My name is Braylandrum. I work in our K-2 schools as an attendance advocate, and I am our top family advocate, so working with our native students, pre-K through 12th grade is my position. Yeah, and then we have for the Gessberg, who's our treasurer. I don't know. It's Gessberg.
It's Gessberg, yeah. Really confusing. I worked at Marshall High School. I'm the assessment coordinator and online manager for our online-only school and also, I don't know, I have a lot of jobs. Pick one and I'll probably tell you that I've done it, is where I'm at. But I mainly work with ninth through 12th grade, mostly recovery, trying to get those type of cool kids to high school, earn their high school diploma.
And then we have, as always, Valerie Tandrew. And I think everyone knows I, I run the library.
If you guys did not listen to the Budget Committee meeting, you might go back and refer to that. Welcome to all the new leadership. It's nice to have you guys around, and so it's a good opportunity, I think, in any organization, just to have new leadership, new ideas, and having people really step up and learn the job, so welcome. I did want to ask, I believe you guys had the, or vote on the contract today?
We did.
Did we get a final vote tally on that yet? Okay.
We haven't, we haven't. We don't have a final tally, but we are ready to sign.
Oh, okay. All right. So, then we'll need to find an opportunity to do that, right? So, whether it's at our next board meeting, scheduled one's on the 27th, but we could also do a special board meeting potentially too, if we, if we want to do that as well, to do it earlier.
You let me know when, what you want me to do, and I will come do it.
Okay, sounds good.
Before July.
All right. Well, thank you all. It looks like we have Becky Crane to do our update as well.
So, excited to be here. Really. First of all, ultra casual tonight, and I apologize, but get voted, but sixth grade at Melcombe today. So, on the road, we're girl day, so it was fun, but as Brian mentioned, we have flowers to fill out these flower boxes. There are more, but I chose purple and gold for the name. So, there are our little district coordinators. I don't have a lot to say. You know, I think you all know what CBEA is up to these days. We are trying to finish up a year doing grades and cleaning classrooms and maybe moving classrooms and all that. It's been a long, hard couple of years, and I just hope all of our people get the rest and rejuvenation they need. I did want to say, I attended Marshall's graduation and it was beautiful. I thanked Eli, you know, personally in an email. But I also, since I saw Rick Roberts is here, I thought of something that I wanted to mention as well. We noticed the police presence, and I can only assume that the people in this room were part of that, and I want to thank you for that. I was attending because of a family member was graduating and my, her dad has PTSD and he was kind of nervous about being a sitting duck in a big gym in a school with news and such, and so the, the presence was noticeable. Our safety's in your hands a lot of times, and I appreciate you taking it seriously. So, thank you. I also wanted to mention that CBEA was able to grant two $750 scholarships this year, and we were honored to give those to Dominic Montiel and Aaron Hutchins. So, Dominic, you probably already know this, Dominic's son of Tammy and Floyd Montiel from our district, and Aaron is son of, I almost said Floyd. Brian and Jody Hutchins, both also employees of our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next we go up to the highlighted departments, and tonight it's facilities and maintenance, Rick Roberts.
Hi, yes. So, there's a handout I think you have in your packet. I thought I'd go ahead and put a quick PowerPoint together so we didn't all have to stare at the papers while I was trying to talk. So, it's been a busy couple of years. It's going to be a busy couple more years, but what I wanted to do is, is just take a few minutes, not very long, and highlight what we've accomplished along the way, and a little bit about the process and how we get there.
Got to hit share for it to share.
Can I go to slideshow and start from?
Is it not, not going? I think if you use the quick talk. Let's try that now. There you go.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, Kusby School District Facilities Brief. First of all, within facilities, facilities is kind of the top, and what's contained or you find within facilities in this school district is maintenance and custody. You'll find the safety program, you'll find emergency preparedness, you'll find our communicable disease plan, and you'll find all of our healthy and safe schools plans, integrated test management, radon testing, lead and water testing. You'll find all that under the facilities department in this school district. Like I said, we've, we've accomplished quite a bit in this school district the last couple of years. We have big plans for our immediate future. Planning provides for a way to consider and establish those priorities and how we move forward with the projects that we take on. So, facilities maintenance affects building appearance, equipment operation, student staff health, and student learning. We look at the building envelope. Basically, can we keep the weather out? We look at the exterior, is holding up? Is it rotten? Is our stucco cracked? We look at the roof, when was the last time we changed the roof or replaced the roof? Is it keeping out the weather? Interior systems, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, communication, we can make sure, or make sure that those are all operating and functioning. HVAC, direct relationship to how well kids perform in the school and how well the teachers are able to work in that environment. Condition of interior spaces, you know, is there interior damage? What about the floors? We have asbestos floors still in the school district. So, we have an asbestos management program and we evaluate those floors every six months, make sure that we don't have a friable condition. Paint, furnishings, so those are the things that we look at and basically the priorities that we look at in establishing what project gets done next. Planning approach, while overall facilities tracks, plans, budgets, and moves through the construction or skilled labor procurement process, and we have different ways of, and means of bringing those projects to life. We talk with building administrators, we talk with building staff, we have a long-range facilities planning committee, and those are the venues that we use to bring these ideas and priorities to life. Eli went out of project, he wants to see things done. So, we have these, these venues to be able to discuss those projects and get them prioritized and budgeted. So, these are some of the things that we've accomplished along the way. I've been here since 2014, and certainly there were things done from 2014 to 2018, 19 school year, but maintenance, building, repair, and paint, 20,000. A big project there was MHS library roof replacement of 208,000. This isn't all-inclusive, it's just some of the highlights for that budget year. 19 and 20, we had some significant plumbing repairs to do here in the admin building. Sunset security fencing, shop ventilation for the MHS metal shop. MHS library carpet was 30,000. And then we took on a pretty big project. It was the MHS main building and west gym, exterior repair and paint, and then we replaced the windows. Those windows in the west gym have been there since 1939. 2021, some more projects that we did. Here, MHS band roof replacement was 225,000. We did Sunset's exterior repair and paint for 60,000. MHS main gym upper windows, 32,000. Incidentally, you'll see in another slide, we're, we're going to move ahead and do the lower windows for the main gym. We need to get the upper windows tinted so we can get all that paper and tape off.
It's going to be, I had it.
I took off most of that tape. Graduation night, it's paper.
So, 21, 22, Melcombe exterior repair and paint was 32,000. A big project, and you know, we had a little bit of an issue with deferred maintenance on the bottom one in our MHS North Stadium roof replacement. That particular project, I think we were at 195,000 when we budgeted that. The difference, 413,000 for that top end figure there is probably resulting, or what resulted from the deferred maintenance. We got into that and it just had deteriorated to the extent where it was going, is going to take a lot more work. So, we, we are currently moving through that project right now and getting material staged so we can get that done. So, those are just some ideas of some things that we've done while we, while we move people around and open new schools and get people set up, so. We're going in to turn it on here.
It should be on. That one you're pointing for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you just point it, it looks.
Okay. So, 22, 23, these are the projects that we're going to begin here after July 1st. The lower windows in the main gym, MHS stadium fencing, I've already gotten that done. A new trash compactor for Marshfield High School. Sunset HVAC controls replacement, it's a little more than 800,000. I think we wound up with about 1.2 million for that. Blossom Gulf switchgear replacement, that's, that's the electrical as it goes into the building, 168,000. District office, this building right here, exterior repair and paint, 25,000, so we'll move forward with that and it'll be budgeted and ready to go after July 1st. So, cyclic maintenance schedule, you know, things that come around. For instance, consider we painted Marshfield High School in 2019 and we'll do it again in eight to 10 years. That applies to roofs on a 20 to 25-year cycle. HVAC upgrades, 15 to 20 years. So, in this district, the leadership, you know, we have a budget commitment, and I think the figure is $640,000. I think it is. That's, that's the figure that we came up with a few years ago, that when we take a look at the cyclic nature of our maintenance and what's going to come due and when it's going to come due, that we have budgeted to be able to follow through with replacements and repairs and upgrades. So, things you may not know, this is just a snapshot of the Kusby School District website. So, you can kind of see right down here, safety facilities and maintenance, or one from the bottom, if you go to departments on our website. And then on the left, you have a menu there, and one of those is emergency preparedness. And on that emergency preparation screen, you can access Alice training, K-4 grade students. We have an Alice training video for high school students. And I've written the emergency plan PowerPoint or produced that, and then the Kusby emergency procedures. So, myself and a couple of other people in the district are Alice instructors and work with our school resource officers in presenting to the students on campus. So, when we come back to school this, this fall, we'll be picking up scenarios-based training, and we'll get our tools together and we'll all show up and we'll go through the four scenarios that we have if we're ever placed in an active shooter position response. If we're ever placed in an active shooter position response. Safety Facilities and Maintenance, this is some more items that you'll find in under Facilities and Safety. Communicable Disease Management Plan. We had COVID-19 specific response measures. So our Health and Safety Schools Model Plan, that was board-approved in 2019. The Large Oregon State University Integrated Pest Management Model Plan. We are moving through testing for lead and water. We have Sunset and Blossom Gulf done now. We're due to get that done this next school year. We'll have those results posted. Prior results are posted there. We have a radon testing plan. We've tested all of our schools. We, as the results, we had some that we had to test again, but they came through and passed okay. And we haven't had to mitigate any radon in our schools. That's it. Any questions?
I wondered, you know, with all these new buildings coming online, do you anticipate anything unique? Just, I mean, they're all coming up about the same time, so at some point, all the maintenance schedules will be sort of aligned? And not a great way necessarily? Is that, I mean, is there a way to kind of address that? I mean, the roofs are all gonna go around the same time, the paints are all gonna need to go around the same time. I mean, everything's gonna need to go, I mean, that's what we're looking at, right?
Eventually, there'll be a little bit of stagger to that, and we'll purposely do that stagger. So if we have roofs coming in, you know, due in 20 years, we might do it 17 through 20 and start a little bit sooner so we can budget it enough that it's not such a big impact to the school district. And we'll just, that's kind of, that's what our approach should be. We won't be hammered with the expense of three roofs all in the same budget cycle over 20 years. That's not our intent to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes? All right. Thank you.
I'll see you later.
Right, I don't know if we have our, if Carly Campbell is online or she's not.
Since I was presenting, I hear.
Eli, you have the night off?
Yeah. Actually, it's filed three days.
What a generous guy. You're not quite the same Eli, I'm sorry. So then the next is Eli's gonna give us the MHS presentation.
All right. So I tried to do my best to kind of highlight Marshfield in the year. So I'll try to do my best to go from beginning to end. It's kind of, you know, I was intending to present back, I think, in January, which in hindsight was probably not the supportest thing considering our, my assistant principal is our basketball coach. I officiate basketball and college basketball, so our timelines, yeah, we weren't really available, so. Lesson learned, we'll do that again. So I'm kind of excited to present kind of how the year went from now until, or from beginning of the year till now, so. So kind of starting off, our biggest challenge, I think, starting out the year was Mass. I mean, I think you guys were really aware of that. But I will tell you the one thing the kids did, the kids were great from day one. There were very few issues. I was really impressed. They adapted. And it was really more the parents and community and all that other stuff, the noise that we dealt with. So I was really pleased. Teachers were great. And so throughout the beginning of the year, no real issues. We're ready to go. Kids are just excited to be in school. They did so long since they've been in school. They're really excited. So there's just a couple of examples of, you know, kids doing presentations and labs and just kind of excited about being back. App assemblies, something we had done a long time. ASB did a fantastic job, Jen Benel. You know, we tried a lot of different formats, you know, A, because, you know, we gotta be socially distant, we're in the gym. We talked about doing it outside for a little while. You know, rain kind of hit, knocked a few down very beginning. But overall, really good considering most of these kids, these seniors, had not participated in one since their freshman year. Really like participating. So it's been a long time. So really good, not a lot of examples, but I was really impressed. I know Jen always felt like there was more we could do, but I thought the kids did a fantastic job. See, so next we have some kind of our fall sports and activities. So boys soccer, a huge accomplishment, first time ever, league champs. Chad did a fantastic job with kids. It's a great group of guys, a lot of seniors unfortunately. So we're really young coming back, but we're excited for what's to come. Football, obviously, we're very aware, state champs, first time since '92. Coach Monz did an awesome job. Again, very senior-heavy, so we got a lot of kids, a lot of rebuilding to do. And I know he's been out there already working with a lot of our young men, getting them ready for the fall. We have a new league. I don't know if you're familiar with our new league. We are going to be traveling a lot. So we will be spending a lot of time in the south, north, it's us, North Bend, Hidden Valley, Ashland, Clive and Union, Henley-Mazah. So that is our district, our special district for football, so.
For football.
For football, so everything else is the Sky and League, but this is the Big Sky. We're in the Big Sky. So appropriate, I guess, because we're gonna be on a lot of travel. Let's see, Boys and Girls Cross Country. Again, pretty young, we only graduated a couple of students. Our boys did an excellent job. Alex Garcia-Silver was state champion, which, you know, we hadn't had his cross-country state champion for a little while, but he is a junior, so he'll be back. We're excited for that. And I know Coach Delgado did a good job of getting the, we have some young girls coming up, I know. No, no. So I know, that's the unfortunate thing, right? So, but we have some really good young boys and girls. Our eighth-grade boys did phenomenal this year. In fact, if it wasn't for COVID, they would have won eighth-grade districts. So unfortunately, one of our star runners wasn't able to compete, so. I know Steve's really excited about that. Esports, so our esports team had not competed in quite a while too, which is interesting because you'd think, you know, with COVID and stuff, esports would be able to compete, but it's still a challenge to get the kids together. So this was the first time for them to get back to competition. We offer two gaming concept classes. That's how, you know, it's, you know, kids are really excited about it. Obviously, gaming is kind of the new craze. And so this opportunity for kids to compete, we're seeing a lot of kids transition into esports. And surprisingly, a lot of our kids have gotten scholarships post-high school, secondary level, to compete in esports. I mean, to the point where it's full rides in college, just like football, basketball, anything else. So a lot of potential in esports. So unfortunately, parents can't say that playing sports is gonna lose their brains out because it will give you an opportunity to participate. Girls soccer, another, you know, we had a coaching change in the middle of the season. Coach Perez has done an amazing job, no seniors, all of them coming back. So we're super excited for our girls soccer team. I was fortunate enough to take our girls to Almira, so I got to experience the trip. I drove my own bus all the way there and back. It was a lot of fun. But yeah, they're quite a group of girls, so. And then obviously volleyball. Coach Montiel has a very young group coming back, again, only a couple seniors. So really excited about what they can do. They were state qualifiers this year. And I'm sure that they will have high expectations for next year. So winter holiday season, so first time in a long time, two years, and we've seen Band Enquirer and the auditorium. And it was a great event. Ms. Bennett, who unfortunately will be leaving us this year, did an amazing job with our choir. Especially because, you know, COVID has really hurt Band Enquirer. Our numbers were really down. And unfortunately, just because they couldn't really do a lot of it during COVID, you know. Choir was, you know, you could kind of require, but band was based out of it. You just couldn't play any instruments or in isolation, it was really difficult. So both Mr. Chaney and Ms. Bennett did an amazing job getting the kids ready. We had three concerts over the year. We had one in the spring and also one just happened a couple of weeks ago. And it was both the end of the year, choir and band, and it's amazing how far they've come. It was really, it was really cool to see, especially our junior high bands. I thought they were my daughters in the junior high band, so I get it. Bad thing, but I just was really impressed. And then, you know, we were, just unfortunate circumstances, Mr. Chaney couldn't join us at the end of the year. Mr. Cruz, who was retired but came back again, it's his second time. Can't thank John enough for coming back again and supporting choir in the fall, and now band in the spring. But also my old band teacher, Ms. Mittelman, who helped out with the junior high band. So we're very fortunate that we have two amazing people in our community who love Marshfield music programs and want to see them do really well. And then we have our wrestling, they did a phenomenal job, Coach Hampton. We had one state champion, Miguel Velasquez. He's one of those kids that you don't really ever know, because he's super quiet. He's an outstanding football player, outstanding wrestler. He was even quiet enough to just kind of disappear on graduation. He flew off to Alaska to go fishing, so didn't even know he wasn't gonna be there, but great kid. And then I just kind of threw on a little picture there. I don't know if you can see that. That little window there, that's Mr. Report. He's doing golf on the shelf in the little window outside of my office. It took the kids almost an entire period to see him. So that was pretty impressive, so. And that kind of sums, if you don't know Casey, that sums up Casey. He's just full energy, a lot of laughs. I can't tell how much I enjoy working with him. He keeps my eyes closed, so I always rather, so. And then, so we had a runner formal, semi-formal. We did it at Old City Hall. This was postponed, I think, three times until we finally had it. It was kind of that point where COVID numbers were starting to rise again. So, you know, we kind of had to put a little damper on some of our activities, pep assemblies and things like that. But followed through, it was an amazing event. James Levine was our DJ. He did an amazing job, shocker, right? He's in his element when he's doing DJing. It was a lot of fun. Boys and basketball, Boys and Girls Basketball, obviously phenomenal seasons. Boys basketball, 11 seniors. I probably, you don't really hear about 11 seniors being on one team, but they had a great year. I know it's not the year that, you know, they didn't finish like they would have liked to, but they were league champs, which is a great accomplishment. And then our girls basketball, again, did a phenomenal job under Coach Miles. Looking forward to good things, again, super young team, so. Get a chance, you know, come out and support these young ladies and men next year, because I know they're excited to get back after it. And then swimming, you know, shocker, they always do well. We had 13 state qualifiers under Coach McDet. And, you know, we have lost a few seniors, but again, a pretty young group of kids. All right, so then we kind of hit our spring and fall stretch. This is when things got a little wild. So first year principal, I, you know, this is just, it was non-stop. I made the mistake of coaching a T-ball team, and I will never make that again in the spring. Because it's just non-stop, so. Our upbeat, so this is kind of, you know, there's this, you know, kind of in between this, the winter and spring is when a lot of our activities have their state competitions, so upbeats, speech and debates, cheerleading. And, you know, our upbeat finished sixth, and again, only had one senior. So a lot of the girls are back again for next year, so we're super excited. Co-ed cheer, we're one of the few 4A teams in the state that have a co-ed cheer team, which is unique. So there, when they can go to compete, they're actually competing against 5A and 6A schools. And so it's not an easy feat to place at state. Speech and debate, I think we're all aware of what Coach Crook has built there. They're actually at Nationals right now, but again, another state championship. If you look at the banners over the last few years, it is speech and debate, speech and debate, speech and debate. They continue, no matter what, you would think, oh, you know, here goes another kid, they're not gonna, oh, they're gonna drop, no. She keeps raising it up every single time. So I'm really impressed. And the nice thing about it too is we don't have a lot of individual state champions, but we place so many students, just so many kids that plays. So it's not like, you know, say, hey, you got one or two kids that are really good. Now, we have about eight or nine kids that are really good, which is outstanding and speaks a lot to the program. Oba, Coach Hampton, regional champs. Unfortunately, they did not get to go to state. There was no state Oba tournament this year, so that was unfortunate. But she was really excited about the potential for them. They're all back, so we have one sophomore and three and four juniors. So they will all be back next year, so we're excited for them and see what they can do. We had our poetry slam, which got postponed a little bit, you know, but we ended up having it. Unfortunately, I didn't get to go to it, so I'm sorry. But, you know, it was exciting to have, you know, it's exciting to have that back in the gym, out of the auditorium again, too. Just something that you miss out on, experiences, a lot of the kids, I don't think, really knew what to expect. Because again, freshman year was the last time we had one. So, you know, a lot of these kids have never even competed in the poetry slam in previous years. So overall, it was a good turnout. So again, some more of our, finishing it with some of our athletics. Boys track, girls track, obviously our boys track, state champs. A lot you can say about Hobalt, we finished first, third, and fourth. Coach Buckets got a pretty good group of guys, and they're all back, so. John Parks was a state champion. Our girls track, not too bad either. Coach Griffin's daughter, Bethany, state champion in the discus, and a few other places as well. So we're excited about both Boys and Girls Track for next year. If you haven't had an opportunity, I know it's true, I was always looking for volunteers and dusties out there. I would highly encourage you, get out and even if you just watch, but I like to get up here, then I'm a starter now, I think. I think that was kind of passing on to me, so, which I enjoy a lot. I'm just always afraid that I'm not gonna get a All-Star. And it makes somebody mad. But, so, you know, and then Skills USA. So if you're not familiar, our CTE programs, really mostly manufacturing, but radio and our tech also get a little bit involved with the Skills USA. Skills USA is a national organization that allows some of our CTE programs to compete in a variety of programs. We had, I think it was nine kids that went up and competed this year. We had a group of our radio students who were state champs, and they're headed to, I think, Atlanta, Georgia, here in a couple of weeks. And then also, we had three students that are state champions in manufacturing, and so they'll be going to compete. So again, it speaks a lot to their programs. We used to have the Cus County Skills Competition for CTE. Hokil used to host that. Over the last few years, they've kind of been afraid and just a little fearful of it. Glenn Crook has kind of taken on, saying, no, we're gonna do it. So it's been the Marshfield Skills Competition. It's basically been us, North Bend, Banden, and I think Row Point. And if you, it basically has been Marshfield all the way through. There are very few categories that you won't find at least one or two Marshfields in, and in fact, we swept almost all of them, including all of the overall welding competitions, which is impressive and speaks a lot about what Glenn's doing in his manufacturing program. All right, so some of the fun stuff, things that we have not done in a long time. MHS charity program. We haven't been to a charity program, Pageant, it's pretty awesome. It's one of my favorite events of the year. There's a lot of the kids that get up there that you wouldn't, you know, you're kind of shocked at what kind of comes out of them. Because, you know, they look so nervous and you would never think that that's a talent that they really have, but it's really impressive. It's a lot of fun. This year's winner was Aaron Hutchins, he was the overall winner, and so we're super proud of Aaron. Him and his partner, I think, gosh, they were right there around, I think, 200 to 300, how many hours, you think?
Oh, no.
Oh, Sierra Brown, I believe.
She had 220.
Yeah.
But Aaron and Sierra, I think they did like 70 hours combined, the two of them.
So, I mean, outside and for, you know, you're talking, you know, three sport athletes. So on top of that, all the other things, academics, you know, it's valedictorian, you know, all those things, they still have enough time to volunteer, so. Super proud of Aaron. The other thing, you know, that was really cool this year that we hadn't done in a long time is our search disaster simulation. I mean, again, if you've never seen it, it's quite an event. It takes over, they take over the entire basically Pirate Hall building as well as the gymnasium. And for those of us, some of us administrators, you know, a few years back, we got to participate in it. I was the incident commander, so it was pretty cool. So it's a lot of fun. It's a lot of organization. How many cable this year, Linda? Is that 100?
I think we counted 70. And then plus the 20-some people that went through the simulation.
So really cool, you know, it's something that, again, a lot of our students, I know, you know, every year, this is an event for our students who take our disaster science course, it's for them to participate in. So we've had a lot of years that students had not been able to participate in this, so it was really cool for them to be able to do that. It's a lot of organization. John and Linda do, it takes a long time. I'm really impressed, the reality, like how realistic some of this stuff is, is really impressive. Especially when you get one of those students who just likes to get crazy. Like Jacob Bowles did a few years ago. Run around all over the place, so. But that was, it's a lot of fun. All right, so a few other ones, prom. Finally get to have a prom in the gym. Red carpet was the theme. It was a great turnout. We offered it to graduating seniors from 2021, because those seniors never got an opportunity to ever be a part of a prom. Because, you know, prom is for juniors and seniors. And the last time they were, there was a proms when they were sophomore. So we had quite a few 20 and 21 graduates come back and join us for prom, so that was great. Couple of our, you know, kind of our spotlight, you know, our community service clubs, our Key Club and Z Club. Z Club did a color run, which was awesome, and Um, Z Club did a color run, uh, which was awesome in conjunction with track. Uh, but they also, um, got a community, uh, foundation grant for five thousand dollars. Um, and they toured a few of our local nonprofits. Um, they ended up splitting it up amongst the Deveraux Center and Maloney, um, and providing them support. So it was really cool to see them. Uh, it was a great opportunity for those kids. I got to drive them to a couple of places, cause we actually went up to Maloney. Um, and then they have a new facility for, um, kids that are transitioning out of foster care, um, that are around sixteen, seventeen years old. Um, and then we toured the, the village, the homeless village down, um.
Pullback.
Pullback, yes, Pullback Village. Uh, so we got to tour that and that's where a lot of their, that's where all that money went. So it was really cool. Um, Key Club, if you guys, I'm pretty sure everybody knows what Key Club's done this year. Um, the front lawn, um, looks absolutely amazing. Um, it's, it's gorgeous. I can't thank Stacy enough, the Key Club. Um, it is really, it's, and it's, when you come up pressed up and look at it, it's absolutely gorgeous. And it really added to not only the three A tournament, but also now that it's completely done, um, graduation. Got a lot of great compliments about it. Um, and I can't think, you know, I can't thank Rick enough for the facilities. I mean, Stacy and them have put all the work into it, but there is some upgrade to it as well. Um, and Kevin, who does the lawn mowing and the weeding and all that stuff, does an amazing job and stays on top of it. So I can't thank Kevin enough. Um, and then last club, our sport, softball, um, Coach Burns, uh, again, a really young team. Um, they got second in league, they're state qualifiers. So kind of a common theme amongst a lot of our sports and activities. Um, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of high performers this year, and I know they're excited for next year as well. Alright, so kind of some celebrations. Um, our first senior AM, been quite a while, uh, which was exciting. Um, not as many kids showed up, so we're gonna try a little something different next year. They were kind of checked out by the time we got to the senior AM. That is our, the top left there, that's our forty-five scholarship recipients this year. Um, we give, uh, the, um, Coos Bay Schools Scholarship Foundation gave almost four hundred thousand dollars, um, to our students. That's just to our students this year. And we have three Ford Scholars, which is pretty impressive as well. Um, and, you know, basically it's ninety percent of your tuition and fees paid for, so. Um, and those three recipients were well deserved and we're excited because they would not be going to their first choice had they not received the Ford Scholar. So I'm excited for both girls, all three girls to, to be able to do that. Uh, and then, um, uh, we also had our, um, awards, our end of award celebration. It was something a little different. In previous years, we've always done it during the day. Um, this year we went for an evening event. Um, it was a great turnout. Um, I, I think it was a great opportunity for parents to come and celebrate with their kids. Um, because that's the problem in the past, where when it was during the day, not a lot of parents could come. Um, and so we're excited about doing that in the future, every year to build it. So, um, honor our students, we give out a hundred and twenty awards this year between all the departments, um, outside scholarships and athletics. So it was pretty cool. Uh, and then finally, uh, graduation. Uh, graduation was awesome. My first graduation. You know, a few little hiccups here and there, but not too bad. Um, I thought, one of the great things about it is that we've not typically done five speakers, student speakers in the past. Um, but I, I, having those five students speak, I think speaks volumes to the diversity of the group. And I think if we had cut out any of them, it really wouldn't, you couldn't have heard all their stories, uh, which was awesome because they came from so many different backgrounds and their, their, their paths through high school were so different. Um, so I was really pleased with that. Hi, Yocetus, she scares me to death every time she opens her mouth sometimes, but she, she, her speech was amazing, absolutely amazing. Um, I think that, you know, I think it connected with a lot of kids. Obviously, if you, you know, if you were there and they announced her name, the kids had no idea who it was. Um, there was about thirty kids that jumped straight up and just started screaming. So they were really excited. Um, Kevin, you did an outstanding job representing the board. Uh, thank you. Um, that was a great speech as well. Um, and so just overall, I think a great evening, um, for everybody. And, yeah, like I said, just a few little hiccups that we'll, we'll fix for next year, so. Alright, so just the last few things. Um, we are saying goodbye to a few staff members. Um, we have a couple retirees. Linda, uh, Stacy Goldseth, they're retiring, and then we have three other teachers, um, that are moving on, um, from us. Uh, Tim Bolster, who I just found out about today. Um, Jacob Lundin and Yomi Bennett. So, um, they're all different paths. You know, one is continuing teaching, one's not teaching, and the other one's going to grad school. So doing a few other things. So, uh, we have four new staff members. Um, one name, the first name might pop up, you might recognize that name, Andrew Post, uh, Laura Sun. Uh, he will be our technology teacher next year, so we're really super excited to have Andrew back, our show graduate. We have Jennifer Bixen-Hill, who will be teaching science for us. Uh, she comes from North Bend. Uh, we're excited off to steal her, cause she's an outstanding, uh, teacher. And then we have Sherry Godley, who unfortunately stole from Eastside, but she's really excited about teaching P. So we're really super excited to have her. Uh, and then another, uh, the other name you might recognize there is Brett Aker. Uh, Brett is a Marshfield graduate and will be taking over choir next year. So we're excited to have Brett back. Uh, and he has, uh, he is enthusiastic about building our choir program up. And his administrator, one of the things that he said about him is he will be in the halls recruiting for choir, like every football and basketball coach does for their sport. So I'm excited about that. Um, alright, so some changes for next year. Um, so some of the things we're doing, I can't hear you that. So some of the new courses we have, uh, we're gonna be offering a business CTE program next year, program to study. Um, so that'll be new. So Caleb Sweet is actually moving over from technology to business. Uh, so we'll have a whole program, which we're excited about. We're gonna offer an advanced basketball class within our PE program. Um, so Drew's radio program, uh, he's been really specifically radio broadcasting. Drew's really wanted to branch out. Uh, if you were at graduation, you probably noticed some of the students walking around with, with tele, with, uh, uh, video cameras for the, and so that is part of his video production class. So you kind of now, when you go into, uh, his program to study, you start out with intro to broadcasting and you can either go the path of radio or you can go the path of video and that kind of that TV broadcasting, which does our announcements. You have a couple of options. So we're excited. SWAC has actually approached us about partnering with them about, cause they're thinking about offering a broadcasting program to study at the, uh, community college. Um, and they might want to use our radio station, so we'll see. And then, uh, next year, our science program is slightly changing some of the pathways. We'll be offering environmental science, uh, which will be geared towards our eleven graders and also have an additional advanced class called AP Environmental. Uh, and Anthony Johnson will be teaching that, so we're excited about that. Uh, professional development. So a couple of things we're gonna be focused on for next year, improving our grading system and practices. Um, it's something that we really think that is where we want to put most of our energy. Um, we've kind of lost our ways over the years, uh, with proficiency grading. Um, so that's something that we're gonna take our time and kind of want to improve on. The other aspects too is avid school-wide strategy. So another thing that previously before COVID, um, avid was a big part of our school, but with COVID, it kind of lost its way. Um, and so we have a group that will be going to the, the Summer Institute here in a couple of weeks, and so we're gonna be bringing that back to our staff. Um, and the other thing too is just communication with families. Um, you know, one thing that we struggled with a lot this year is just our website, keeping that up to date. Using Facegram, uh, Facebook and Instagram, um, newsletters, um, our calendars are kind of all over the place, so kind of having a centralized calendar and then using the, the Community App Plus, which is something that a lot of the school districts are now using, uh, and a lot of other businesses. And something that's pretty cool is because it's something that you just kind of put out in the area and it pings. So when you drive by it, it gives you announcements, if you have that app, so. Um, a couple of things that we're working on for next year. Um, so just some of the highlights for next year, we're really, one of the things we'll be giving out at, at registration is a full list of events for the year. Um, something we really haven't done in the past, and we've really worked hard to make sure that we get everything scheduled from now basically all the way through graduation and that parents have that available to them. Um, some of the big things, um, obviously, you know, the Civil War game is gonna be the twenty-third. We have homecoming. Um, and, you know, one thing we're gonna be bringing back for homecoming is fun on the field, which we were able to do this year, uh, which is, uh, opportunity for a long lunch. You know, get some inflatables and kind of carnival games and things like that for the kids. Um, door decorations, all that kind of stuff that we've missed out on. Uh, and then, um, got our fun SET day. We'll have our holiday concerts again, the Schwab Tournament. The charity program is actually gonna be moving from April to February. Um, it's been, uh, it's been a struggle with the conflict of always never knowing spring sports, cause they're always changing, uh, because of rainouts and things. And this year was probably one of the most difficult years with rainouts. Um, so we thought if we moved it back, it'd be kind of a little bit more consistent. Uh, one of the things I would love, I'd invite any of you guys, if you have the opportunity, senior interviews. Um, any staff member in the district, um, we, we, we're, we're, we're starting to open up to as many people as we want because we used to have a larger staff at eighth grade and we realized this year, we didn't quite get as many people. Um, and so if you're ever available, we're gonna start doing those in February. We're gonna do four rounds and I'll give those out to you as soon as I can, the exact dates. But I'd highly encourage you to sit down. We usually have about four, you get about four each day, and we just ask them about their high school experience. And it's really cool to hear all their stories, um, what went well, what would, what they have done different and the advice that they would give to, to the younger kids. And then just some of the other things, um, all the way through our scholarship assembly, um, which will be the May seventeenth and kind of that final push of stuff. So that is, uh, kind of next year in a nutshell, so. That's all I got. Questions?
Very thorough.
I don't, I'm gonna be like, I threw this together yesterday. But I will say, you know, and, and obviously, you know, I didn't get to highlight a lot of our clubs and things and obviously, earbuds, it's hard, but all that, this, most of this is earbuds. So these pictures would not exist without a earbud, um, and a lot of other clubs. So I really appreciate Seth for giving me all those pictures.
Thank you very much. You're appreciated.
And I got a, I got a gift. Senior edition of the Marshfield Times, so.
I would recommend that they hand it out after this.
I know, it's, I, we, we have.
See, uh, David, did anybody sign up for a couple of these? Uh, let's go ahead and move to the district staff presentations and we'll start with, uh, Brian this night.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. I, I took up a lot of airtime at the budget committee the other night, so. I'll be brief. My, the, the one thing I have on my, uh, update is just the superintendent transition. Karis is back there, uh, in, in the back of the room. We've been meeting regularly, uh, you know, answering questions, talking through things. I intend to continue as much as she wants. I'm not gonna force myself on anybody, uh, but not going anywhere, so if there are questions, uh, I'm happy to answer and, and, uh, work with her. But it's been, it's been a nice transition. It's been nice to be able to talk to the next person as, as we move forward and, uh, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna make it, I think, much smoother for Karis and, and, yeah, much smoother for myself too. Uh, knowing that, that we're in good hands. So that's my, questions about that?
Do we have anything scheduled? I know part of our superintendent search included some transitional services for Steve Kelly.
There's some things that are coming up, I believe in August. I think Peggy's working on trying to track that down. But she did talk to Steve Kelly and, uh, there are some, some board workshops as far as, I don't hate this word, onboarding, cause it sounds like waterboarding, but.
We're the Pirates.
We are the Pirates. But, uh, there are some onboarding, uh, workshops and, and, uh, seminars that OSBA will, will work with you all as a board with, with Karis on.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Yep. Sure, sweet.
Yep.
Uh, let's see, uh, I think next we have, uh, financial business service updates with Candice.
So our, our first report in your packet is the general fund by object. And this is not a very good picture of our finances at this particular time. And I, and the reason being, I ran this report through May thirty-first. We'd already started, um, one of the several payrolls that we do in June. So this is skewed a little bit. Not all of the encumbrance is correct because we already ran one. For ten-month employees, we have three payrolls in June. For twelve-month employees, we have two. So it, this is kind of wonky, some of the, the ending balances on here. Did you have any questions about this report? If not, we can go to the next one, which is our statement of revenues and expenditures and shows our ending fund balances as of May thirty-first.
Can I just ask that? So you, you, it's wonky, but there's nothing unexpected in it.
No, there, it isn't. It's just that it's not, uh, our, the encumbrance column is not entirely accurate. Because we've already started spending that money and we hadn't released the encumbrance yet.
There's nothing in it that.
No, no.
You're.
No, it's just not a true picture of May thirty-first, but. Um, see, the next report, uh, has the difference in revenues and expenditures in the general fund of an ending fund balance of nine point three million. Again, with so many payrolls in June, we are going to spend a significant amount of this within the next couple of weeks. So, in the, the budget report last week, I was anticipating, um, just over five million would be remaining as of June thirtieth. Any questions on that? We can go to enrollment based on June seventh. And you can see from the bottom graph, there is, um, a slight difference between May fourth and June seventh, which is, is expected at this time of year. I, I find, I find this bottom chart, um, very interesting to see the ebbs and flows of, of how it goes from the beginning of the school year to the end. We started out in September with three thousand sixty-eight and on June seventh, we had three thousand eleven. I do want to point out that on Madison's kindergarten number, I had been reporting six teachers since the beginning of the school year. And I can't remember exactly the timeframe. I want to say it was November, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure. There were some, some changes in staffing at Eastside and that number actually went to five kindergarten teachers and I was not aware of that. So I had been misreporting that all month, they are all school year. Um, they do have five. All the other staffing is the same. Any questions on enrollment?
How are we year over year, since we're gonna be getting resources from the state based on average daily attendance? Are we up from the year before or?
That's a, that's a little bit hard to tell at this point, only because they're still, I think they're still working on second quarter ADM. And ADM goes by the day and what I'm showing is just a snapshot during the month. Um, but they're actually taking, um, each seat hour for every student throughout the quarter and then applying those weights. So, um, kind of apples and oranges comparing this to, to what it is we get for funding. But we are predicting next year that our enrollment will be up slightly from this year.
Do we have any idea what kindergarten enrollment might look like or is that?
That is always, uh, the elephant in the room. Um, there, there have been teachers in the past that have a, a way of predicting based on how many enroll by a certain date. Um, it, it really fluctuates. We really don't have a good idea of, of what kindergarten will be. We kind of just base it off of the previous years. We have families that enroll early and then we think, wow, our numbers are going to be great. Um, and then maybe it tapers off or we have all of a sudden families enroll at the, you know, twelfth hour and, and our numbers blossom. So, um, we're never really sure.
On the Marshfield Junior High for the eighth, for eighth grade, is it supposed to be zero or?
Yeah, because last year I didn't have eighth grade.
So, uh, so the online doesn't calculate or anything?
No, la- last year they were just seventh grade, that had blossomed. So that's why last year's number is zero for eighth grade. They were, uh, counted in the high school number.
Do we have any numbers for the online or?
For the junior high, um, our online numbers are K eight and it's in the graph down below. So I have one hundred and eighteen students. I don't know which school those necessarily belong to. It's just, at, at that time, it was one hundred and eighteen in total.
I just know someone back to school, I didn't know about that.
That does, it, there has been a correlation when a school increases or decreases a little bit. You will see that K eight number maybe go up. You will see that K8 number maybe go up or down. And the same with Marshfield High School and Destinations. You can kind of see a flex in that.
Any other questions for, for Candace? I think you can. On the next up, we have Chad. About the language arts curriculum review.
Yeah, this is the third installment for you and final update for most intents and purposes. So tonight we're coming to asking you to formally adopt the curriculum that we've been looking over. And there are lists right there in your packet. I'm sure you have it. Looks like Amplify CKLA at the K-5 level, Amplify ELA reading at the sixth grade level. There's a, there's a split. It's the same company, but it's just the way they break out their curriculum. And then My Perspectives ELA at the secondary level, seven to 12. And then new for this year, ODE asked that we formally adopt the online software that we're using, online curriculum, which isn't the normal way of doing business, but they've asked, so we're doing that. We've been using these, both of these Accelerate and Edgenuity Odysseyware for several years, especially Edgenuity, going back a long time actually, but we'll ask you to formally adopt those also. In the past, ODE, the rule was we just adopt our core curriculum, not all of our peripheral curriculum and additions. But as online software has moved, curriculum has moved to the forefront since the COVID time. That's why they're asking. And then I also have our ELP curriculum on the, on the list here, but we're going to hold off on asking you to adopt that because we were hoping that we would move through the process and check all the boxes, but we're not quite there yet. We need to spend a little bit more time with the parents and the community before we ask you to formally adopt those last three. And those are just, due to the grade level spans from K to 12, it's the same company, but they, the names of the programs are separate. So when you, when you vote tonight, you're going to want to vote on the Amplify, the first two Amplify products. My Perspective ELA Accelerating Edgenuity Course, we're just holding off on those last three. The guys just needed a little bit more time and they were still working on that even today. So I, I'll come back to you in either August or September when we can finalize that process and ask you to adopt those last three at that time. And this list right here is, it's the legal requirements, law for adopting any of our curriculum so that you have that in hand and it's in the board packet. Our next steps, after you adopt, you approve, vote to approve the curriculum, we'll purchase the material. It's kind of an ongoing process and getting the quotes and estimates here for several months. Scheduling the delivery, the logistics of bringing in inventory and passing out the new materials and getting rid of all the old stuff. We're trying to, we're going to, we're going to do our best to get rid of everything else, all the things that we've accumulated over the years and focus on just Amplify here coming up to consolidate our efforts and to get everybody going in the same direction. I'm also in the process of scheduling all the professional development, which at the K through sixth level will be about 17 to 20 hours starting in August and continue into at least October, if not longer. And October will evaluate where we're at and what else we need. So it could be more than that, but I don't want to schedule that until we get some of it, learn from where we're at and see what teachers and staff still need. And at the five through, at the seventh to 12th level, we have about five to eight hours scheduled as of right now. And the same thing, we'll schedule more if this needs once they learn. And we'll make sure that we're including as many of the classified staff as, as possible. And I'm hearing today that some of our other stakeholders in the community might, might want to attend these meetings to get a better understanding of what, what this new curriculum entails. So we'll, we'll move to bringing in as many people as possible that are interested in learning about the curriculum, natural training portion of it as we can. And then we'll also move towards setting up all the tech components, assessment, the online instructional material that students will be able to use. I have several teachers, teachers with us here tonight, Lily and Becky, Amelia, Stephanie and Nicole that worked on this project. There was about 25 of us that were deeply involved in the process that I've described to you in the previous meetings that are here to represent us tonight and also answer any questions. Last time you didn't ask, ask any specific questions, but there's your, your, another third chance to do so if you want to. And I'd also like to acknowledge Amelia and she was really my co-partner in this project and did a lot of the work and compiling information, asking questions of the publisher and the sales reps and their experts and getting that information back out to teachers. I really appreciate her work on this project with me. So questions for us or for you or the teachers?
Okay, so on the five things that you wanted a vote on, are, how many of those are we already doing? Or compared to like giving them be something new or?
The first, first three will be completely brand new. We don't have anything other than sample materials for those first three and we're not, we're not currently using them. The teachers have had a lot of time to look through, then ask questions, watch presentations and all that type of thing. But we're not currently using them. Then Accelerate and Edgenuity Odysseyware, we've been using those for several years here, especially Edgenuity. It goes back maybe even eight years we've been using it. And it just wasn't the ODE process to formally adopt those at the time.
Okay, and then I'm guessing that the budget difference is this, this is the new class type stuff that's in the new budget?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chad's asked too, I mean, I know there was an opportunity for the public to come in and, and look at the materials. Do we get anything specific feedback from folks that that would be important for us to know?
We, we have very few parents that come in and review our materials. It's, it's common. We have more teachers, teacher parents come in and review materials. There isn't anything specific to report.
Is there a place for books in the library with the reading program? But I just want to make sure that we use our right, our library effectively. I mean, the curriculum doesn't necessarily tap that, but how does the, how does the library work with the reading programs that we are going to be accessing? And are they, are the reading programs based on phonics or are they based on whole read? What kinds of, of this program is, what is it called?
Amplify. It's, it's what we're calling currently the science of reading, which is a new, new language for a phonics-based approach. And I described it last time as it's, it's a modern phonics-based approach with kinesthetics, manipulatives, as opposed to old school phonics where it's just, you know, small group, group instruction without any of that other reading. What you were probably used to in school where you sit in a group, in the small reading group and you learn with, it's a phonics-based approach, but you didn't have manipulatives probably, you just had a reader and not much standing movement or anything else going on. This is a much more modern approach.
We, when I was on the website, should we pass a number of bills in particular around dyslexic kids and having programs that would address the issues of those dyslexic kids? Is this part of that whole system or is that something that we do separately?
I'm a guy of the structured literacy program, so it has explicit systematic instruction in phonics, K3. And then it has for the, and I'm specifically talking about K6. And then it also does content, very content-rich, so curriculum, so growing language comprehension through oral vocabulary and reading. And there's a whole list of trade books that we've already given our librarians to make sure we have those books to access to support the curriculum, or we already have some of them, I'm sure. And so, yes, we're trying to incorporate all aspects of the literacy in our schools.
And writing.
And writing and speaking and listening. It's not just, so. We're really excited to have a Common Core curriculum because we do not have a, the last time we adopted was 2000?
Six.
Yeah, a long time ago. Before Common Core standards. So it'd be exciting to actually have curriculum that addressed Common Core standards explicitly.
And I guess my last question would be, there are kids like me who are dyslexic and had a hard time and needed especially the phonics. And then there were kids like my daughter who read when she was born almost. And the phonics kind of made her frustrated because it was kind of wasting my time. Just let me read a book. Does this allow for that kind of thing with respect to individual needs of kids?
Yes. However, students that are readers already, phonics instruction actually supports them in writing a lot. At the time, they might be able to read, but they don't have those writing skills. And so their ability to learn those, how the English language works with phonics allows them to actually be accelerated. It actually accelerates kids who are accelerated even more is what they have, what research has found about phonics instruction. So, yes.
Even those, the students that just learned to read naturally, they don't necessarily understand why the language works the way it does. And it's important for everybody to have that, that keen understanding. It's the same as math. I mean, I can, you want to understand why the numbers work the way they do. And you, you could say that, well, that's boring because I can already do the problem. But you want that basic understanding. We want everyone in the school to have that basic understanding because they're, they're, we want to build the community knowledge of reading, which is going to raise all of us up because at, at some point, they're going to be working with their younger brothers, sisters, cousins, whoever. And they're going to be adults and parents one day themselves also. So the more that they understand how the language works, the more they'll be in a position to say, I think there's a problem here. Let's get help. And, you know, addressing what you were talking about, I mean, it's, the more basic understanding our whole community has, the better off we'll be.
And I, I guess I could say last, but my daughter would say that the best writing instruction she ever had was Latin, just because it finally made her understand the whole system. And, and the other part, that was the only saving grace in English in my whole career in school, because it was not my favorite subject, was diagramming sentences. And I know it's not done as much, but I still love diagrams. It's the only math part of English I've ever been involved in. I hope we don't lose it completely. I just love diagrams.
I don't know. I don't remember my kids ever doing that.
Amazing.
Maybe we can have a board, a board exercise.
I just wonder if Rob's going to pay you for the Latin.
Any other questions for Chad or any of the teachers that have been working on this? So this is a part of our job, right? I mean, with the, the, all the school efforts has been to locate curriculum, evaluate it and, and look through it and provide community input. It's budgeted in our new budget. So I would ask if we have a board, a motion to approve the curriculum tonight.
I'll go make a motion to approve the curriculum. Which he stated.
They were outlining the five actually.
The five?
The five. The first five on the list.
First five on the list.
I will second that. And also, I just want to make sure that everybody understands how impressed I was of your presentations about the way it's been doing and the teachers that are most showing up here and have been engaged in a long time. Because it takes a lot of work to get this right. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the curriculum, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Appreciate your hard work on this. Right. I think maybe if it's okay next, I'm going to ask if Adrian wants to give us an update in terms of the negotiating committee?
Okay, you want the long version or the short version?
Sure. Well, again, as a board, this is another item where, you know, we could potentially vote on this tonight if we feel comfortable. The, it sounds like the union already did conduct a vote. So if you do want, those of you who have not been involved in the negotiating committee, you might want a good update, I would assume.
Okay, so I, I might not have had the latest version, but I don't remember the contract being in our packet for this meeting. So, you know, if you're not comfortable with that, then that's, yeah, we can do that at a later time. But I do have a list of the highlights, things that have changed in this contract. First off, this is a three-year contract. We are a little bit concerned over year three because we have a pretty good idea of what next year's budget is going to be and the year after that, because the state does their budgets in two-year cycles generally with a, like a 49, 51 split. But, you know, with the enrollment changes and things like that, that third year's a little bit of a mystery for us. But I think we did a three-year contract last time and, and that's worked out well for us. And it, at, at least if you're on the negotiating team and don't feel like you're bargaining all the time, which is no fun for anybody. So we did have quite a few language changes. A lot of those were due to the passage of House Bill 2016, which was back in 2019. And that, a lot of that deals with access to the buildings and by the union representatives and then being able to go about some of their business on campus and use of equipment, things like that. Kind of the meat and potatoes of the, of the contract. For year one, we negotiated a 50 cent salary increase, 50 cents per hour with no step, but that does include a purse pickup. So that's a fairly significant increase for our employees there. For year two, there's a 3% with the regular steps and also removing steps one and three from the salary schedule. So compressing that down, I believe it was 11 steps, I, it was 10. Okay, so that moves it down to eight from 10. And then the third year is an additional 3% plus a step. There was some slight changes to the longevity, longevity bonus language. I think those bonuses are given every 10 years now. We actually negotiated a decrease in cell phone allowance. Those costs have actually gone down over the years and from the cost of it where it's actually a lot less expensive for the district to just give somebody a phone rather than an allowance for that. Let's see, we did add, there were a lot of changes to the, through the vacation time off entries. Juneteenth was added as a holiday for our 12-month employees. There were a lot of changes to the vacation accrual, vacation accrual process. There were actually three separate dates that counted for accrual, whether you were a 12-month employee or 10-month employee. And there was something else that kind of escapes my mind right now. But 12-month employees actually earned their vacation during the year and then were able to use it the next year, whereas 10-month employees earned it that year. But the way it was earned did not allow them to take much of any time off at the beginning of the school year. So we made some changes to allow them to do that. Let's see. And I apologize, I printed this out and I left it on my printer, so I have my kiddo send me a snapshot here. Made some changes to the job posting requirements so we can get those positions filled faster, including the inevitable, you know, someone takes a position and then someone else takes that empty slot and someone else takes that empty slot, so that we're not continuously posting for jobs and it taking months and months for those to get filled. And there's also language added to review classifications as necessary and language added for, for employees to request transfers to different portions of the district. We added sick leave donation language. We added sick leave donation language, similar to our certified contract, as well as, I think, a day for emergency closure leave if we have those snow days, ice days. And then some insurance increases, I think that was seventy-five dollars the first year and then twenty-five dollars for each of the additional years. And also on the insurance side, we fixed up the HSA language, where employees who were choosing the HSA option were actually getting an increased benefit compared to those who were on a regular insurance program, because historically, the HSA program was a savings to the district. And so when that language was created, part of that savings went to the district and part went to the employee, and now the cost of those plans are approximately equivalent. So if you'd chosen the HSA, you're actually getting an additional event, an additional benefit compared to somebody who was on a regular insurance plan. So that got changed, so if you do choose an HSA, you do get the, the difference in cost between that plan and the regular, and the insurance cap added to your HSA account. And so that covers the, I think, most of the major changes. There are some other small language changes, including the, what was it called, the omnibus language change proposal, which, you know, changing like his and her to their and some other things like that. Any questions?
I do think, you know, less than half the board were involved pretty closely in all of this, and I, I don't, if it hasn't gone out to the rest of the board, may make most sense to not vote on this today to give the rest of the board a taste of look at it, I would say. That would be my, my thoughts.
There, there is a lot of extra language changes compared to, I think, the last few times we've done bargaining. And a lot of that was just due to passage of legislations and changes that we had to make, and it is a lot to go through. It is.
And we do have on the schedule, an extra meeting if we needed to on the sixteenth, oh, I think.
Fifteenth.
Okay. As well as the twenty-seventh, so.
Extra budget meeting that we didn't make.
Right. Exactly.
The twenty-seventh, we have to be a minimum of an hour, so that's, that's a good one to.
Right. See that, yeah, that we have.
The twenty-seventh has to be open for an hour.
Oh, for the budget. So that, that could be the best option, is that we send it out in its final format. I think the union's already approved that on their end. So if it's feasible, what we do is, is have an opportunity to look at it, and then we can go ahead and do a final vote on it on the, on the regular board meeting. If we need to do it earlier, we can schedule that this week for our budget, but if not, if it makes sense, why don't we just carry it for a regular special board meeting, which we have, yeah, we have to have at least an hour meeting to finish the budget process as well. So that's probably the best thing to do since we didn't send it out to everybody in its final form, so.
So I want to say Adrian did a really great job of managing that. I appreciate her being on the committee and appreciated his leadership.
Thank you, not, not my favorite thing to do.
I would put a plug in that, that is one of the committees that it probably does make sense for us as a board to rotate through, to have some experience, but also that everybody gets involved in that process, it's such a key part of what we do, and it's, it can be mostly, probably the most, half one of the more taxing things that we do, but it's probably also one of the most rewarding things that we do as well, so. The other thing I wanted to ask too, and I noticed we have on our board agenda to approve a policy, but we don't have anybody necessarily assigned to speak to that, is that there's, so I don't know if somebody wants to speak to the second reading and adoption of the graduation requirement policy.
Eli.
And I didn't know, or if that was, Kevin, I don't know if that was something that, that was taken up in the budget in the policy committee or?
It was a change to the language arts requirements.
So, yeah, so for the honors program?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, what we, what we're asking is that right now, the way it stays, is that you have to take, you have to take honors nine, honors ten, and then one is going to act after that, but we miss a lot of kids who take, like, if they don't take honors nine, then basically they're, they can't get honors, so we'd like to adjust it to where it says you have to have three years of advanced coursework through either honors nine, ten, college writing, college lit, and whatever. So.
We've discussed it last time. Kim, who was in charge of that committee, went through it last time.
Yeah, she presented last time.
Thank you, I, I had forgotten the, a month, it seems like a really long time ago. So this is the formal board agenda item related to that discussion.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. So then, if that, knowing that, I would entertain a motion on, a request to approve the.
I would move the, approve the language arts curriculum adoption, oh, second reading and adoption of policy IKF graduation.
Thank you, Arnie. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Adrian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion and adoption of policy IKF is approved. All right, see where we are here. Oh, I guess the next item is board member highlights. Do we have any highlights they'd like to give, Arnie?
Yeah, I just want to say, it was a great, I have been enjoying going to Madison Psych Council meetings, and it was really, the last one reminded me that you really have to plan a long time ahead, and they were starting to talk about next year and all of the things that go into planning for next year, including getting back to some normalcy, like having programs that they haven't had for a while, but for some of those stuff, and having those conversations amongst the staff at Psych Council, I thought was, was really heartening, and it was something I, I think hopefully we're all looking forward to, so I really enjoyed that. Also, the different programs at the high school for recognizing students were really awesome, and I thought they did a really great job. And I had not been to the forensics dinner and awards, that was really a nice event at the high school cafeteria, the kids were really good, and you can see why that program has developed the way it has, and I'm really pleased with that, that was really exciting for me to see. And having been on the scholarship committee since its inception, the four-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars given away this year is pretty impressive when you think that in nineteen ninety-nine, when it started, we gave away twenty-five hundred dollars, and we felt pretty good about that, right? Four hundred thousand dollars sounds a lot better. There were a lot of kids, there were no child who applied that didn't get something, so and that's pretty exciting for those of us that are on that committee and have been for a long time. So what, knowing what a small scholarship can mean to kids, because it says the community cares about you and wants you to be successful the next step of your life, and it's been really amazing to know that, I think there's six or seven million dollars now endowed in that scholarship.
Seven point two.
Seven point two million dollars, and a bunch of it is vocational scholarships, some of the biggest scholarships given away were vocational ones, which was really fun to see, and it is alumni in our community that have come back and done amazing things, and giving money to that over time, has been really impressive to watch, but good time of the year to see all that stuff happening.
Okay, Bethany, any?
Sure, real quick, I attended the track awards ceremonies and all the coaches do, so I guess I can only speak to the ones that I attended, but it was lovely, well-run. Chad and Steve did a great job, as well as Mr. Vineyard, and all the coaches, did a great job, recognized every kid, it was just great, and by the same token, it's great to see kids recognized.
Yeah. Kevin?
Yeah, it was nice to see the graduates happy and motivated and getting ready to go, and then top it off, I've been wanting to speak up there for like twenty-one years, for real, in two thousand and one. It's not the same speech, everyone said, do your speech from high school. It's kind of been a while, so it is modified about, almost a hundred percent. It's one thing off my bucket list, so thank all of you for making those, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Adrian?
So, well, I could kick myself for missing the scholarship assembly, and that was due to an error on, on my half in use of electronic calendars, but I was able to make the, the other awards assembly, as well as the band and choir concerts and the tennis awards. I think someone could make a fortune selling cushions for the auditorium. I spent a lot of time in those seats over the last few weeks, and it's not comfortable after the first twenty minutes or so. And then, I think, and I've been going to a Southern Oregon area robotics, it's like a coaches group, they're trying to get that program running up and approved. I'm used to Terry talking about the libraries, so you hear me talk about robotics all the time. And so we do have one more, one more meeting in the series, which is on Wednesday, and I think that will actually provide a, a small stipend, which will go to the program as well, so.
One last thing, I just want to remind everybody that we are hosting an evening with our new superintendent at our house on the thirtieth, so hopefully everybody can make it. And we've got a little invitation that shows there's no parking, we live on a street that has no parking, or very least. Thanks to Adrian, we have a driver who will drive our van back and forth from, like, places a couple blocks.
Not me.
It's, it's not a teenage driver, is it?
Is he twenty or is he just still nineteen?
I don't know, college student.
All right, all right, well, we'll give him a little credit there.
So I would really love to have people come by, welcome our new superintendent, and we have a lot of local mayors and stuff, the whole cities have been invited, so it should be a nice evening, and Blackmore, Vermont is going to host, that's going to happen. Love to have you all there.
Thank you, Arnie, appreciate that. And also, Diane, I want to give you an opportunity to share if you'd like.
Hi, I just want to say how much I really enjoyed the Destinations and Resource Link graduation. It was really nice and it makes me really proud that those programs exist within our school district, and I really enjoyed hearing some of the stories of the students and the reason they're in those programs, and I was really moved by a lot of their challenges that they overcome, and it was, it was really enjoyable and really nice. And I'm really sorry that I wasn't able to make the Marshfield graduation, we kind of had a sickness come through our house here, so I just didn't want to risk getting anybody else sick, but I really did enjoy Destinations and Resource Link graduation.
Thanks, Diane, good to have you here with us today. See, next on our agendas, I don't know what it means exactly, but communications. Is that somebody attached to that?
No, I think it was a relative of the last one, must have came with the.
All right. See, anything else before we end tonight? All right, well, you guys have a good evening, and it's still sunny and it looks like it's not raining, so.
It's not the weekend.